All right. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Cora Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, September 9th. Please take a roll call.
Commissioner Bendel, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Kenny,
Here.
Commissioner Busher,
Here.
And Chair Chase.
Here.
Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance by the citizens of our public or which one nation under God in the business of liberty and justice so.
Thank you. Now a bit of business that we have to attend to. At this point of every year, we elect a chair and vice chair for the commission. So we will open the commission to nominations for chair first.
Second.
Thank you. Now we do a roll call here.
Commissioner Bendel,
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Kenny,
Yes.
And Commissioner Busher,
Yes.
And Chair Chase.
Yes. So then we go to nomination for a vice chair on this board up here. Does anybody want to nominate another persona for vice chair here? Dean, are you willing to be vice chair?
I am.
Okay. So do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bendel, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Kenny,
Yes.
Commissioner Busher,
Yes.
And Chair Chase.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Now we can get on with our business. So tonight at this point in every commission meeting, we have a open time for public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you want to make a statement or make a comment, you have three minutes to do so from the podium or online if you wish. You would raise your hand online. So I don't see anybody rushing up to the microphone in the room. Claire, do you have anybody online?
No hands are raised online.
Okay. So then we will close that portion of the meeting tonight. We will not have any open time public comment and we will go to the continued hearing tonight. So this is for 400 Oakdale Avenue. This is a design review application PL 23-0003 for the demolition of an existing one-story residence and the construction of a new 2971 hundred square foot two-story residence inclusive of an attached one-car garage and associated site improvements including a swimming pool at 400 Oakdale Avenue. So we will get a staff report and then we will ask questions of the staff and then we will get a presentation from the applicant and we will ask questions of the applicant as necessary. And then we will, I'm going to entertain the comment from the neighbor to 404 since it's probably the most significant portion of this hearing tonight. And then we will go to a public comment immediately following that and we'll see what we do for deliberations after that. So Martha, please proceed.
Good evening Chair Chase and members of the commission. This evening you'll be considering a proposal for a new two-story residence at 400 Oakdale Avenue and the proposal includes the demolition of an existing residence and carport structure. The project site is located at 400 Oakdale Avenue in the Chapman Park neighborhood as shown on this slide. The project site is a relatively flat rectangular lot that is 7,000 square feet. The parcel is a corner lot located on the corner of Chapman Drive and Oakdale Avenue and Oakdale Avenue is the front property line since that is the shorter of the two street-facing property lines. There are two existing single-family residences located adjacent to the site. Located to the east is 404 Oakdale Avenue and to the north is 230 Chapman Drive. There are additional single-family homes located to the west across Chapman Drive and also to the south across Oakdale Avenue. The site is developed with an existing single-story home that was built in the 1920s. The home is 1,078 square feet and it is a three-bedroom, one-bath home. There is also a two-car carport that is 322 square feet and two sheds that are in the backyard. And the applicant proposes to demolish the home, the carport, and the existing sheds as part of the application. The zoning of the site is R1 medium-density residential and this slide shows the various development standards of the R1 district and on the right-hand side of the slide is the applicant's proposal. The project complies with the various development standards of the R1 zoning district including setbacks, height, lock coverage, floor area, and parking. At its tallest point, the house is just over 27 feet where the code maximum is 30 feet and the town's ADU ordinance allows for an exceedance of 800 square feet to both lock coverage and floor area for purposes of constructing a necessary dwelling unit. And the lock coverage inclusive of the ADU complies with the 40% maximum and the proposed FAR inclusive of the ADU is 3,696 square feet and this is compatible with the ADU ordinance in that the FAR exceedance is 696 square feet. The applicant made several modifications to the project based on comments that were made at a planning commission meeting on April 11th, 2023 and also based on conversations that they had with some of the neighboring properties. The applicant submitted a revised design that included various modifications as shown on this slide and some of the more substantial changes including removing the upper level deck, removing the outdoor kitchen proposed on the east side of the home, removing the carport, reducing the number of windows on the upper floor of the east elevation from five to three, modifying the materials which included adding stone, replacing the stucco with board and batten siding and adding wood elements to the window indoors and then reducing the upper level square footage by 100 square feet and the square footage was added to the lower level. The planning commission held a public hearing on October 22nd, 2024. Six individuals provided in-person comment in support of the project. Two additional residents provided written correspondence in support which was read into the record. Dana Dean of Hanson Bridget who is representing Eli and Elizabeth Gage of 404 Oakdale Avenue raised objections to the project specifically regarding the height and the bulk of the project and the view blockage it would create. The commission provided feedback to the applicant regarding the design specifically about the height, the bulk, and the view blockage and several commissioners inquired about the possibility of reversing the design and putting the main home in the rear of the property. And the planning commission unanimously voted to continue the item to a date uncertain. Following the October planning commission meeting, the applicant made some additional modifications to the project. This included reducing the overall height and the height of the largest ridge by 22 inches and this was done by lowering interior ceilings and also changing the roof pitch. The lower three roof lines were also reduced in height by six and a half inches, eight and a quarter inches, and 11 inches. And this was done by changing the roof pitch to match the pitch of the upper ridge. The upper wall facing the neighbor at 404 Oakdale Avenue was inset approximately 12 inches and stepped in and this resulted in the size of the home being reduced by approximately 30 square feet on the upper level. And lastly, the applicant proposed to plant three new trees along the eastern property boundary to fill the gap between the existing vegetation along that property line. Between February 2025 and July 2025, the owner of 400 Oakdale Avenue and the attorney representing the property owners of 404 Oakdale Avenue had ongoing discussions regarding the sale of a portion of 404 Oakdale Avenue's property to 400 Oakdale Avenue. The strip of land that is owned by 404 Oakdale Avenue abuts the rear property boundary of 400 Oakdale Avenue. And this portion of land is approximately 500 square feet. It is 50 feet in length by 10 feet in width and the area in question is shown on the map on the left-hand side and it's outlined in the red box. And the picture of this area is shown on the right-hand side of the slide. The sale of the strip of land from 404 Oakdale Avenue to 400 Oakdale Avenue would have resulted in 400 Oakdale Avenue being considered a reverse corner lot. 400 Oakdale Avenue only qualifies as a reverse corner lot if its rear property line abuts the side property line of 230 Chapman Drive. By definition, a reverse corner lot is a corner lot where the rear property line abuts the side property line of another lot. As a reverse corner lot, the rear yard setback of 400 Oakdale Avenue could be reduced from the standard requirement of 25 feet to 5 feet. And in addition, the street side setback along Chapman Drive would be required to be increased from the standard setback of 10 feet to 15 feet. So the code essentially allows the setbacks to be modified to mimic the required setbacks of the property at 230 Chapman Drive. Unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, the two parties were unable to agree to the sale of land. And so what the commission is considering this evening is the proposed project in the original location. The applicant proposes to construct a 2,971 square foot two-story residence which includes a 227 square foot attached garage. The applicant also proposes to construct a 725 square foot ADU in the rear portion of the property. Inconsistent with state law and the town's ADU ordinance, the ADU is not being considered as part of the design review. It is included in the plan set as reference only. Site improvements are also proposed which includes a new driveway, a walkways, fences, landscaping, and a swimming pool. A vehicular access to the site is proposed by a new curb cut approach from Oakdale Avenue at the southeast corner of the site. And the project includes two parking spaces, one covered space and one uncovered space which is located outside of the setbacks. And this slide is also showing the proposed setbacks of the primary residence. The front setback is proposed as 15 feet one inch where 15 feet is required. The street side setback is proposed at 10 feet 6 inches where 10 feet is required. The rear yard setback is proposed as 57 feet 10 inches where 25 feet is required and the interior side setback is proposed as 6 feet 11 inches where 5 feet is required. The first floor of the proposed residence is 1,892 square feet. That includes one bedroom, one and a half bathrooms, a living room, dining room, kitchen, laundry, mudroom, and a one-car garage. The second floor is 1,119 square feet and that includes three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and an office. The proposed materials include a board and batten siding painted light gray, white facade stone, a white trim, dark gray standing metal seam roof, a black aluminum windows, and wood accents at the windows and doors. The site is located in the Wildland Urban Interface and all materials would be WUI compliant. And an actual color and material board is on the dais for the commission's review next to Commissioner Bendel. The west elevation faces Chapman Drive. This elevation includes an entry porch and a chimney. Windows of varying sizes and shapes are proposed on this elevation. Four windows are proposed on the lower level which include two at the living room and two at the kitchen. In addition, there is a glass door that provides access from the dining room to the sideyard. Five windows are proposed on the upper level which include three in the bedrooms, one in a bathroom, and one in the office. This elevation is also showing the prior ridge heights of the prior iteration of the project. At a maximum height, this elevation is 25 feet and 11 and 3/4 inches and the red outline is showing what the prior heights previously were. The south elevation faces Oakdale Avenue. This is the front of the home. The garage opening is visible from this facade. The south elevation includes three different building components and the garage and the mudroom extend from the primary facade and are located closest to the front property line. A 15-foot setback is required and a 15-foot one-inch setback is proposed. Four windows are proposed on this elevation which include one in the lower level in the mudroom and then three windows on the upper floor, one in a bedroom, one in a closet, and one in a bathroom. The north elevation is the rear elevation that faces the backyard. The lower level includes an 18-foot nano wall that provides access from the kitchen and family area to the outdoor patio. A wood trellis is also proposed along a portion of this elevation on the lower level and one window is proposed on the upper level in a bathroom. The east elevation faces the neighboring property at 404 Oakdale Avenue. Five windows are proposed on the lower level, two in the garage, two in a bedroom, and one in a kitchen. Two glass doors are also proposed on the lower level to provide access from the laundry room and the bathroom to the sideyard. Three windows are proposed on the upper level which includes one in a bathroom and two in the bedroom. And the original design previously had five windows which was reduced to three windows based on concerns by the next door neighbor. The landscape plan shows that nine trees will be planted. This includes five crepe myrtles and four little gem magnolia trees. To date, the applicant has planted six trees and these are all planted in the landscape median along Chapman Drive and the applicant intends to plant an additional three trees once the driveway approach is eliminated. All of the trees are 24-inch box trees and the picture on the right-hand side shows the street trees that have been planted in this median. A variety of plants are also proposed throughout the site. In the southwestern portion of the site which is near the corner of Oakdale and Chapman, there is a planting area. In addition, plants are proposed behind the sidewalk in front of the proposed six-foot tall fence and artificial turf is also proposed in the western portion of the yard behind the fence. In order to approve any design review project, the planning commission must make the required eight design review findings which are shown on this slide. Staff believes that the most relevant findings for the planning commission to consider in the evaluation of this project is findings three and four which are highlighted. A finding three states that the project will not significantly adversely affect views or privacies of any nearby residents will provide adequate buffering between residential and non-residential uses and otherwise is in the best interest of public health, safety, and general welfare. A finding four states that the structure, site plan, and landscape are in scale and harmonious with existing and future development adjacent to the site and in the vicinity and with the landform and vegetation in the vicinity of the site and that landscaping shall be based on water conservation design. Staff and the commissioners visited the property at 404 Oakdale Avenue to view the story poles. The proposed residence at 400 Oakdale Avenue is located closest to the neighbor to the east at 404 Oakdale Avenue. The residence at 404 Oakdale Avenue is a one-story home that is oriented towards the west. The west elevation of 404 Oakdale Avenue has two bay windows, one in the living room and one in the dining room. There is also an additional changing room off the primary bedroom that also has a window that faces west. This slide is showing the view from the living room. The foreground view from the living room window includes greenery and vegetation planted at both 404 Oakdale Avenue and 400 Oakdale Avenue. And then in the background view is Christmas Tree Hill Ridge Line which is outlined in blue on this slide. And then further beyond is Mount Tamalpais outlined in red. Additional photos are provided that were taken from the various rooms and also from the outdoor space. This was attachment eight to the October 22nd staff report and the October 22nd staff report was attachment one to your staff report. Most properties on the 400 block of Oakdale Avenue are developed with a two-story home. One-story homes are shown with an orange dot, two-story homes with a blue dot, and then there is one three-story home shown with a red dot. Ten of the 12 lots on the north side of Oakdale Avenue between Chapman and Eastman are two-story homes. The project site and then the adjacent property at 404 Oakdale Avenue are the two homes that are developed with single-family homes or the two lots, excuse me. And the majority of lots on the south side of Oakdale Avenue are also developed with two-story homes. And on the south side, there is one one-story home, eight two-story homes, and then one three-story home. This picture is of a few of the lots on the north side of Oakdale Avenue. The grade of the majority of lots on the north side of the street are set below the street. This results in the two-story homes appearing as single-story homes from the street. And then on the opposite side of the street on the south side, those properties all slope up which results in the entire home being visible from the right of way. There is a large variation in the living area of homes in the immediate vicinity. The living area of the existing homes on the 400 block of Oakdale Avenue range from 1,086 square feet which is the project site up to 3,258 square feet which is 412 Oakdale Avenue. Of the 22 homes on this block, nine homes are between 1,000 square feet and 2,000 square feet. 11 homes are between 2,001 square feet and 3,000 square feet and then two homes are greater than 3,001 square feet. And across the greater Chapman neighborhood, there is a wide variety of home sizes. Staff recommends that the planning commission determine via a motion whether the findings required by section 1830070 can be made for the design review application for a new 2,971 square foot residence and associated improvements at 400 Oakdale Avenue. Staff recommends that the commission include in its motion direction to staff to return to a future planning commission meeting with the appropriate resolution. Alternatively, the commission may elect to provide direction to the applicant so that they may return to the commission for future consideration. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Martha. All right. So at this point in time, the commissioners will ask staff questions. So I'm going to start with you, Valerie. See if you have any questions for staff here tonight.
Very fast. I didn't think of any yet, but I will. I have one question to end specifically on the if the commission cannot or can find some findings and specifically finding four, when is the objection to the finding could be deemed as subjective in the purpose of describing why the finding is not met or not?
I want to make sure I understand the question. You're asking at what point would number four be a subjective?
Correct.
So I would say that finding four is subjective in its nature. When you are talking about issues like being in scale or harmonious with existing and future development, that sort of thing, that's really not an objective standard. An objective standard is height, setback, et cetera. So if there's a project that does not permit the town to apply subjective standards, then you couldn't apply a finding four?
So how do we go here since it's not a structured finding that is easily met because of the difference of opinion? How would that be appropriate to meet or not meet that finding when it comes to?
The current project is not an SB9 project. Therefore, you can apply the subjective design review findings. If it were presented to you as an SB9 project, you could not.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then I would like to understand a little bit more from just planning specifically. So one of the options has been considered is to reverse the lot what we have recommended in the past meeting. I believe there were a couple other recommendations from the commission to change the second-story design slightly so that it's less obvious of the height. Was that considered by the applicant?
The applicant reduced the ridge height slightly. The tallest ridge was reduced by 22 inches and then they stepped in the upper level 12 inches. But I recommend you ask the applicant if there are other things that they considered.
So I believe there was a recommendation from the planning commission to consider the other possibilities to reduce the height, not just the ridge height, but to change the design slightly to have dorments on the sides, for instance, and other things to consider. Was that ever being discussed after?
It was not discussed between the applicant and staff, but I know the applicant had a variety of discussions on potential changes. So I'll defer to them to answer that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Thank you, Valerie. All right. I'm going to swing all the way over here to my left and see if Margaret has any questions.
I do. The address is Oakdale Avenue. Right. Correct. But as I read the picture, the front door, this is, the front door is Chapman Drive, is putting aside the small, the lesser of the dimensions to be the address. Would, are we considering Chapman Drive to be the front of the house?
So as far as what the, how the setbacks are determined, we look at what the shortest property line abutting the street is.
And that determines the address. Is that correct?
Correct. But how a house is oriented, it's not uncommon for front doors to be on what planning considers to be a street-side setback.
Okay. So I noticed that in most of the comparisons here, mostly in the plans, but most of the comparisons in your staff report also are to houses on Oakdale. But that's not, in my mind, that doesn't seem as accurate as comparing them to houses on Chapman.
Yeah, for that, you know, analysis, I looked at the 400 block of Oakdale and looked at living areas and two-story homes. I would say on Chapman, the homes kind of directly across the street, there's quite a few two-story homes in that area of Chapman. As you head, you know, towards, as you go north towards Tamalpais Drive, some of those homes are smaller in kind of that first block between Tamalpais.
And one other question which may or may not be relevant. Do you know any of the history of that little strip that's on the side? How did that come to be?
The attorney for 404 Oakdale I think can answer better, but it's always been part of 404 Oakdale's property.
but it's always been part of 404 Oakdale's property. It's identified as parcel two of that parcel. And I believe that this home was constructed in the early 1900s. And at one point, that provided access for like a horse carriage. But I anticipate that Dana Dean can probably provide some additional.
So they didn't, did they, at that point when it was constructed, have an access on Oakdale or was it only on Chapman?
I believe it's only on Chapman. There is no garage or, you know, any parking from Oakdale. The access was from that Chapman.
But as I understand it now in the negotiations, the gauges were willing to give up that, basically give up that strip with reservation of some kind, is that correct?
Correct. So those dialogues would have, 404 Oakdale Avenue would have sold that 500-square-foot parcel or portion of their parcel to 400 Oakdale with the reservation that the gauges be able to continue to access it.
Access it, meaning they could drive onto their property?
Correct.
Do they use that currently to drive onto the property?
I'll let Dana Dean answer that question.
I think that's it.
Okay, we can come back to everybody here with more questions. It's inevitable. So our new commissioner is here, and I'm sure he has some questions for staff, or does he?
I have one question, talking about that parcel two. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Sure, all right. Back to that parcel two that we just talked about. Given that the negotiations for that are kind of at a stalemate, is that something that's off the table insofar as our recommendations and our deliberations? Or is that something that we could still make a recommendation about?
You cannot require it, so it could not be a condition of approval. So I think unless the parties agree to it voluntarily, which they have not been able to do, the town can't impose that in any way.
But it could be a recommendation, perhaps? I'm just curious about how that works.
I'm not sure what benefit such a recommendation would have. Eventually, the town has to rule on the application that's before them. And the application that's before them presumes that they do not have the right to make use of that property.
Okay, thank you.
All for now. Daniel?
I guess I'm next. I have a question for Anne. The applicant shows an ADU on the property, proposed ADU on the property. And we don't have any discretionary review over the ADU. But do we, is there any obligation on part of the commission as we review the plan to assure that they could build an ADU on the property?
I would say no. However, we would be required to waive or partially waive any regulations that would preclude construction of an ADU except unless we can make certain findings that are quite difficult to make.
Cool. Can you give me an example?
So let's say that, trying to think of a good example, let's say that we make it difficult to provide building area where the ADU could go. They could turn around and do an attached ADU. Or they could decide to make a smaller-than-usual ADU or ask us to waive whatever setback, applicable setback requirements there are short of the four-feet setback in order to allow it, which means that they could put it in their front setback or any one of a number of other places.
Okay, great, thank you. I have a question with regard to the staff report on page nine. And this is the next-to-last paragraph. And the conclusion of staff is therefore the only viable option to shift the primary residence at 400 Oakdale Avenue to the rear portion of the lot would be for the owner of 400 Oakdale Avenue to acquire the adjacent portion of land currently owned by 404 Oakdale Avenue. As previously discussed, this would de-reclassify 400 Oakdale Avenue as a reverse corner lot, thereby allowing the rear yard setback to be reduced to 25 feet to five feet. Wouldn't it be possible for them just to move the house north and keep the 25-foot setback?
The required rear yard setback is 25 feet, so there is the ability to shift the house further north towards the rear of the lot.
So that's different than your statement here, which says they couldn't do anything else without acquiring that property, but they could move the house north and stay within the 25-foot rear yard setback?
Correct. I think the comparison was more in order to reduce it to something like five feet. That really the only way to do that is to, for them to acquire that strip of land since staff was not able to make variance findings to reduce the rear yard setback otherwise. But the minimum setback is 25 feet, so there is the ability to shift it.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question, last question.
Thank you. One of my questions has to do with that rear yard setback at the 25-foot. And I did read in the staff report where you addressed the idea of creating a variance there to push the house into the variance back there and that that would, it would fall short of the required findings to grant that variance.
Yes, staff and our assistant town attorney took a hard look at variance findings and evaluated if we think this could qualify. And ultimately, we determined that it could not because there really is nothing unique about this property. It's, you know, 7,000-square-foot flat lot. And we just didn't think, you know, we could make those findings, particularly finding one and two.
Okay. Started to write a question and got stopped in mid-sentence, so I can't ask that question. But I think at this point, then, if the commissioners have no further questions, then we'll go to the applicant's presentation, so.
I had one.
Please, go ahead, Margaret.
One other, and this is just sort of what I I watched, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched the video. And I recall that the property is owned by two brothers. Or how is the family, the gauges, live on the property?
So 404.
I'm sorry.
So 400 Oakdale is owned by the Grabham family. And I can let, yeah, it's.
Okay, but the two, the two brothers are the construction and?
Yes, they work together for, yeah, G Family Construction.
Okay, I just want to get that straight.
I have one more question. I would like to understand a little bit of the right to use that piece of land that possibly could be purchased. So in terms of the right to use, does it mean that the applicant cannot fully build on it? Or they can build but with the reserve for the 404 Oakdale resident?
So the discussions between the two parties was that 404 Oakdale Avenue would continue to be able to use it for, to provide access and that it would, there'd be a permanent reservation. So the 400 Oakdale Avenue would not be able to build on that 10-foot-wide strip of land. Would continue, it'd be reserved for the use of 404 Oakdale Avenue.
So if they want to make any improvements to that piece of land, even if they do agree to provide the usage of that piece, they will not be able to make improvements as well? It will not be treated as theirs?
They would own it, and there would be a lot line adjustment to facilitate the sale and the transfer of land from 404 Oakdale to 400 Oakdale. But there would be limitations on how they use the land because of the reservation.
I see. But they will be also be able to use it, correct? It will be a co-ownership of some sort?
The legal documents weren't all developed, so I don't think I can really answer that. But 400 Oakdale Avenue would have, they would have owned it. But there would have been a right for 404 Oakdale Avenue to continue to use it for, to provide access from this street to their property.
Understood. Thank you.
Suffice to say, it's off the table. Yeah.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
But they couldn't really develop it anyway because it's, would be classified as a setback.
So, yeah, so setback would be five, five feet from the rear property line.
And the width of it is 10 feet.
Correct.
So they could develop five feet of it if there was no reservation?
Yeah, but it's not a part of our deliberations, unfortunately.
It's such a good solution.
Right. Understood. All right. So with that said, we're going to ask the applicant to come up and make their presentation for us tonight.
So I was going to say a few things. The designer, my brother, designer, my brother will also do a short presentation. A lot of things Martha already went through. She did a very thorough job working with us. So, but we will answer kind of this story that we've gone through over the last 11 months since we were here last. So to start off, thank you for taking the time to consider our new design. Since we first received feedback from 404 Oakdale nearly three years ago, we've invested a significant amount of time, money, and resources to architectural design provisions and redesign to address their concerns. Unfortunately, as I will outline and also in our presentation, their feedback has been often unflexible and unreasonable. Following the last design review meeting on November 13th, we met with the gauges at their home. We proposed additional design compromises, including lowering the roof lines, reducing square footages, and increasing setbacks of the upper floor. While they appeared open during the meeting, they gave very little feedback. Two months later, after many requests for comment, we received an email stating that the only acceptable outcome would be to fully preserve their current views. Something we feel is not feasible in a growing neighborhood in the flats of Corte Madera. During that time, we also explored the possibility of building a one-story home, something that the gauges initially recommended back in 2023. But due to the setback requirements, no matter where the home was placed, it would still block their views just as much as the current two-story design. And we'll show what that looks like. A month later, at the gauges' suggestion, we explored the possibility of acquiring a small strip of land, of their land. We believe this was a promising solution and invested much more time and energy into exploring this option. Essentially, it would allow us to push the home far enough back to eliminate the impact on their views and even increase the views they currently have. This included mockups of the design of moving the house back as far as five feet off the property line and then 10 feet off the property line, et cetera. Again, at their suggestion, I got a broker's opinion of value for the land, which I shared with you guys and shared it with Dana Dean as well. She was supposed to get a broker's opinion of value as well, but did not share it with me despite asking multiple times. With that in hand, I made what I believe to be a fair offer. But instead of a straightforward sale, they proposed to pay, they proposed, we pay for the land, cover almost all legal and redesign costs, and pay all future taxes on the land, all while giving them full ongoing access to the land via reservation easement. And as stated, what the discussions that we have made and the negotiations were for, basically, we have zero use of the land. They have 100% use of the land. In short, we would pay well over $100,000 in expenses for land we couldn't use. And when asked what the benefit of completing this arrangement would be, they contended that it was simply to avoid future litigation. We countered with an offer that essentially leaves them with what they currently have now, plus the added benefits of no view impact. We buy the land for $1 with their full use rights in place, split the legal costs and cover the costs to redesign our home for the third time and cover all future property taxes. So in essence, we're giving them what they already have, plus we're paying the taxes on this land that we have no ability to use in any way. All that in an effort to eliminate the view impact on their property.
Can I interrupt you for a second? So it sounds like you're relitigating this to some extent for the purpose of saying what your intentions are and so forth. If this is off the table, then I don't know why we're visiting it so thoroughly, but.
This is what, this is what we've gone through over this last 11 months.
I'm going to ask you, excuse me. I'm going to ask you guys and everybody in the room to not be implying derogatory behavior on the other person's part. It's not good for the process. It's not good for you guys. So please dial it down a little bit and just think about what's important to convey here. That's all I'm asking. Okay, thank you.
Again, I apologize if you felt I was being derogatory, what I was doing in expressing the history of the last 11 months that we have spent trying to negotiate with the owners of 404 Oakdale. And believe, you know, there is, going through this process has a lot of emotion tied to it, unfortunately.
I'm sure it does.
This is our family's home that we are trying to build. This is not a rental property. This is people who live in this community, who work hard in this community and sacrifice for the people in this community. So there is a lot of emotion tied to it, and I can't just be a person sitting there like a, you know, have no emotion.
I'm not asking.
So that's, I apologize for that. But if you wouldn't mind, I'll just continue on.
Please.
You can ask whatever questions you have. Thank you so much. I'll just dial it back a minute so that you guys can connect to where it was a moment ago. Again, my final offer was we buy the land for a dollar with their full use rights in place, split the legal costs, cover the costs to redesign our home for the third time and cover all future property taxes. That offer was made on June 19th. We then gave them over two months to come back to the table with a response or at least deny our offer so we could move on. Instead, the reply that our offer was, instead of a reply that our offer was unacceptable, they waited the entire two months, ignored my request for comment. And then at the end of the deadline, we heard secondhand from Martha, the planner, that they declined the offer. At this point, we believe we have exhausted every reasonable option and have gone above and beyond to find common ground. We've invested significant amount of time and money on their behalf and made a sincere effort to be good neighbors. Unfortunately, it has become clear that the gauges will not settle for just removing the view impact from their home, but require us to line their pockets for the privilege to do so. Their statement that was presented to the planning commission says that if we had gone to the gauges in the town first, we could have avoided the time and expense that we had incurred. The reality is, we have looked with the gauges at every feasible option besides the land swap, and every other option leaves us with the same impact on 404 Oakdale. This is something that we, again, don't take lightly. We don't want to have an impact on them. We've tried very hard to not have an impact on them. We've tried very hard to compromise in many ways. This is not something that we just came in there and decided we're going to throw a huge house up and forget everyone. We don't care. It hasn't been like that at all. And Martha probably can't comment on this, but we have done our utmost to engage with them and be flexible and work with them on this. Respectfully, we request that you approve our revised home design based on its merits aligned with local planning guidelines and considerable steps we've taken to compromise. Thank you.
Ivan, can you put up our first slide, please?
By the way, John's lived.
Uh, by the way, John's lived in that house for five years now. We've been working on this project for over three years. I worked with Phil, uh, Phil Boyle for over a year on the design of this project with preliminary design, uh, consultation, four or five different meetings as I went through the whole entire thing. So this wasn't something that we took lightly, as John said, to put together. This was uh, a vast effort and even the communication in the beginning where we tried to communicate with the gauges before we submitted our project and did a tremendous neighborhood outreach as you guys were in the meeting last time, where a bunch of people showed us support for this project because of the good work that my brother John has done in the community with helping the neighbors fix their fence or going and putting in some light bulbs, even going over to the gauges' house and fixing some stuff for the renter over there. He's not someone who's a developer who's just trying to build this house and get out, but that's where it's headed because of the amount of money and time we put into this project. It's going to be a development project for us if we get denied here. I can tell you that right now. So Ivan, go ahead and get started here. So this is an example of our three different options that we started with and models of when we started our first submit all in 2023, 2024, and now we're in 2025 here with the adjustments. Ivan, I would rather show uh, the floor plan adjustment so you can go to the next slide. And you guys have seen those, so. Go to the next slide. I'm looking for the one with the red that shows the roof height in the front. Um, one of the things that you had said, uh, Peter, in the last meeting was that we were maxed out on the height limit, maxed out on the floor area ratio, maxed out on lot coverage. And so we took that as the feedback. We asked you guys for feedback. We felt like we didn't really get the feedback we were looking for of the adjustments that we could make to get our, our project approved, but we took what we heard in that and we reduced the roof pitch again, which you can see is 22 inches. We actually weren't uh, at the max height limit. We were at 28 feet, but now we're at 20 or 28 feet nine. Now we're at 27 feet at the very highest, which is the lowest part. And in the front of the house, we're actually at 24, 25 feet. And so this is a very similar house on Oakdale where the street is high above. I'm sure you guys all went there. And when you look at the house from the front, there's a hill. That's why we have the access from the side yard is because the whole front is the hill going down to uh, Chapman Drive. And so this is the view here, Ivan, if you can zoom in on the window, please. This is the view out of the Chapman's house right here. That 13 feet right there is Mount Tam. That's showing 15 feet. If we built a one-story house, it's blocking all of Christmas Tree Hill and Mount Tam right there, the 18 feet. Um, yeah, Mount Tam is the skirt. That's 13 feet right here. Here's where we built the one-story house of 15 feet. Here's our ridge right here on a corner at two feet or 20, uh, 20 feet. So when I designed this house, um, with respect to the neighbors, the whole entire goal was to try to keep that impact on the neighbor as low as possible on that side. And so if you can go to the section, Ivan, I want to show the section with the ceiling cuts. Um, you can see from my second. Don't slow down. This is a hill that's slowed down. It's higher in the front. We tried to mitigate that in the back, but basically, right here, if you look at the roof lines right here, we're at uh, eight feet. First, my other section, right? We, we, we cut this roof down even more right here so that you have a roof that goes up and then it's right here, this section right here to keep this at 20 feet down. And so instead of it just being a regular roof, we have this whole, this whole little funky jog right here. Both are planes on both sides. We also dropped the whole entire house down to get a slab on the brace so that we didn't have the crawl space to keep the slab as low as possible. Sorry. Like a rock star. Um, so from the very beginning, we were trying to keep that, that side as low as possible. There's a lot of vegetation on that uh, side between the gauges and 400 Oakdale that exists right now. You can see that it's almost grown over Christmas Tree Hill and uh, Mount Tam as it, as it is right now. There's literally, you know, looking through that window, it's the view is this big. And so, you know, in one more year, uh, those, those trees are gonna grow up and you won't even see Christmas Tree Hill anyways. The other, the other thing you mentioned was a big flat wall. And I've been in many, many design review meetings all over Marin Mill Valley, Sausalito and a wall articulation. There's no definition of wall articulation, but I have been asked in several different uh, design review meetings to articulate the wall 12 inches. And so we felt like that would break the plane of the wall if we articulated the wall 12 inches. We already have a seven-foot setback. We're only required five. That seven-foot setback is only over 25 feet. The rest of the house is stepped back to almost eight feet on the setback. And so we have a small portion of the house that's actually uh, within that 25 feet at at seven feet, and then we stepped back another foot. So by the time you get to the house, we're eight feet off the property line. And on the other side, because we're on a corner lot, we have a 10-foot four setback. And so we're squeezed between trying to give them as much light and air as possible and the 10-foot setback that we have to abide by on the other side and also still giving shape. And so in order to design this house, we have a center part where we squished everything right into the center because that was the only place we could, uh, and then we set everything back everywhere else. That was the only place that we could basically have rooms. The rooms are not big. The bedroom is 11 feet wide. The stairs are four feet wide. This isn't a big room like massive houses. This is all very strategically designed. And when we squished everything in even more, I had to put in 45-degree walls just to get access to the bathroom. And so every single time we've done a revision here, we've reduced the mass, we've reduced the size, we've reduced the roof levels. I don't know where else we can go from here. So, um, this clearly shows our third reduction. Uh, Martha, I didn't know she was gonna show all the wonderful slides that we put together, but this again is showing, I think, a big commitment to letting in more, more air and light. And again, even if we did a one-story house per the other slide, that's still gonna block their view. So uh, I'll save some time for a rebuttal at the end. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So for the applicant, that completes what you guys are gonna present tonight then at the outset.
I'd like to rebuttal it.
Oh, yeah, you'll have that opportunity. Yeah. Okay, now, before we go to the neighbor, um, do commissioners have any questions for the applicant right now that you want answered? Anybody? Go ahead, Dan.
If we could go back to the slide that showed uh, what would happen if it was a one-story building?
Ivan, can you put up the slide out of the window?
Yeah.
And out of the gauges' window?
There's currently a one-story house there and they currently have views of Mount Tam and Christmas Tree Hill. Why would a new one-story house be different?
Because that house is 16 feet wide and 1,000 square feet. And so the roof lines are much lower. It's a thousand-square-foot house. That makes sense? So when you build a wider house, your roof lines go up higher. So if we're building a thousand-square-foot house, which we wouldn't build a thousand-square-foot house, then yes, you can see their roof line is right there. That's where everything is off of their roof line. Literally right here.
Go ahead and take the mic.
Line right here. See this?
The existing.
This line right here, this blue line is our roof line right here. Uh, thousand-square-foot house.
And then if you can go to the image below that one.
With eight-foot-high ceilings.
Uh, I think you created this diagram. Is that correct?
I didn't create the diagram. He went up there with the story poles and measured everything up and placed everything. So.
But you're the source of this. You guys are the source of this document. Yeah.
Could you explain the diagram? What, what it's showing us?
The bottom-left diagram?
Yes.
This is uh, this is a diagram that I sent to Dana Dean and Eli Gage showing their views and what is left over for us to build based on that 25-foot setback and then no impact to their views, which is what they were requiring from us. And I said, we're left with essentially 900 square feet um, area to build.
Uh, and the view angle you're showing there, what's that based on?
That's based on the direction of Mount Tam.
Uh, and
Yeah, Christmas.
Did they have any comments about this diagram?
Did they have any comments?
Did the neighbor 404 comment on this?
No, they didn't have any comments. They like, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, anyone else here have any questions for the applicant right now? All right, seeing none, then please take a seat and we'll let the gauges.
Before, oops. Can you hear? No?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Before it's, before I get started, I did want to comment. This is a really lovely facility, but it is very hard to hear sometimes what the commissioners are saying. I thought I would solve the problem by sitting up front. It didn't solve the problem. So if.
Noted. We'll, we'll make sure.
I mean, a lot of rooms like this and it's, it's noticeable that it's so beautiful, but the sound is, is something to think about. Okay.
It's so cool.
Um, uh, I am Dana Dean. I represent the gauges, the owners of 404 Oakdale. And I want to start by thanking you for all the work you've done on this. I appreciate it. We appreciate it very much. My comments will be brief as you have received a lot of written and oral comments from me before. I want to focus on just two things. Maybe a couple more that have come up in questions. First, the legal issues. As I'm a lawyer, I'm going to tell you that I detailed the project. I've, I detailed that the project as originally proposed before the 2023 um, canceled meeting, subsequently proposed throughout and now proposed was then and is now remaining inconsistent with important general plan and municipal code considerations that we have previously detailed because the project does not respect the neighbor's view, sunlight, privacy and safety. It just doesn't. Instead, the project destroys those things for their neighbor. I don't, thinking it's, I've been thinking a lot about the process that we've been through. I don't actually know why the general plan considerations weren't a part of the original um, present, uh, the original application that came before you in 2023 as for the purpose of a study session. I, I do know they put a lot of work into it, but I don't know why that wasn't thought through. Perhaps they didn't know. But after that date, after April, when I submitted comments that plainly demonstrated this was an issue, um, it really was never resolved or, or even more than nominally addressed. Um, so that was over two years ago and these fundamental problems remain unaddressed. That's not going to go away unless it is meaningfully changed. Turning to our lengthy efforts and the various communications, I want to make sure that what Eli and Elizabeth agreed to sacrifice is made clear. One, under the alternative plan and perhaps this other 25-foot setback issue, which I honestly don't have much to comment on other than we would certainly consider it and take a look at it. They give up their significant rights to the privacy in their large and lovely backyard. They give up the views from that same large and lovely yard. The description of their property would forever be diminished from 800,000 square eight, eight thousand square feet to 7,500 forever. So every time someone might go to sell the property or otherwise work with the property, perhaps some kind of planning circumstance, they have a smaller lot. And I look at listings all the time. The square footage of a lot matters to the value of the property. Um, the offer that we put, put together. Our offer also included, excuse me, that Eli, the legal cost issue is a little murky in terms of what I heard. Our offer included that they would pay my firm to do all of the documentation, the recordable instruments, et cetera. Purchase and sale agreement, uh, deeds, maintenance agreement, ease, reservation, whatever it took. That's the only legal fees that we had considered uh, to offer. We actually started with a $100,000 offer because that was based on the, on the um, uh, estimates, estimates we got. The higher end was 100 and we got down to 60,000. So the idea that somehow we haven't been moving in the negotiations is just wrong. Um, they're take, they're offering to sacrifice a lot and the idea that, that it's so troubling to hear that even after all of this and all that we have invested, including all of my time, we're still hearing cynicism that we're trying to line the gauges' pockets. They will suffer an, uh, an economic loss as a result of what was proposed, but they were very willing to do it because they want to move this forward. This idea that I have threatened litigation, it's actually that we're trying to avoid litigation. So I'm happy to answer questions. I know there were a couple that I wrote down, but um, I know Commissioner Vandell had a question for me.
Um, if you wrote it down, perhaps you could repeat it back to make sure you got it right. So.
Does anybody remember the question? I think it was.
Barger.
To do with the horse and buggy.
I'm trying to.
The history of it. Yeah. That was always there from the 1900s. Both of these properties have been the way they are since I want to say 1903, 1907, in that range. That was always there. And my understanding is, and this was common back then, it was intent because you'll see all over Northern California, these 10-foot easements that would never um, be appropriate today. They were for horse and buggies. Did that answer the question?
A horse and buggy would come out in and out or through that slot.
Yes, yes. Oh, and then let me talk about what, so what they do now is they park in that area, but it's the intention that when the gauges come home, um, I think everyone knows that Elizabeth is in a wheelchair and they've done a lot of work, you can see on the property. The intention is so that she can, they're gonna adjust the paths and everything so that she can readily be moved in from the um, from the reservation area. Does that make sense? Can you repeat that?
So you're trying to say they would create a pathway from that flag piece up to the door?
Correct. Chapman. Their van in and then she could come out.
Right.
And you see, uh, there's an elevator there up to the porch.
Rather than coming down the ramp on Oakdale.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I feel you look quizzical. I, did I answer your questions?
Yeah, I, I wasn't understanding how it, it was and will be used. And now I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, you look like you have one, Valerie. Go ahead.
Yes, I just have a question. Have it been considered as an idea to entertain? Um, if the, because from what I understand is selling the land with the right to use it without giving a new owner an ability to develop that land um, is tricky because they would have to spend an additional money for the project to redesign the project as well as to um, pay for the land essentially as well, which significantly uh, brings their cost up and the building becomes um, not feasible in that, after that, right? Like to the value that they will return on the house is not um, equivalent to the price that goes for in Corte. equivalent to the price that goes for in quarter of a year. But besides that, have it been considered that perhaps they could sell the, sell that without the right of use that? And ask the applicant to rebuild the front of the house for the ramps, for the accessibility, for the gauges? Access to the front of the house instead of from the side?
I'm sorry, your question is?
So the question is, has, have other compromises been considered?
That, that has not been discussed. I don't honestly, I mean, it's interesting. And I think, I believe everybody knows there is a ramp in the front and then the elevator. But I honestly, the cost of that. And let me just back up. I had not heard that anyone considered the cost infeasible. So that's, that's new to me. So I'll look at that, but I'm not sure that cost would be significantly less than purchasing the, the parcel two. And let me also say the value in purchasing parcel two is that they can build that beautiful house in the back of the lot. So there is value. It's we all kind of are, are perhaps not looking at it the same way. I respect that Chair Chase has indicated previously that the, the deal is dead. Maybe he said it more nicely than I did. We're still at the, we're still willing to be at the table for sure. We, we absolutely are.
Okay.
The, the other path is not pleasant. So, but it's very clear. So we'd be, we're still here. We're still here. We, the primary, and let me also say, not all views are preserved in, in the alternatives. That's just a false statement. You can see that what Eli and Elizabeth have chosen is to preserve that, the views from the living room and dining room as the highest priority and willing, we're willing to sacrifice most of the rest in order to do that and in order to advance this project. That's just it. It's a lot for them. It's a huge sacrifice. They didn't ask for any of this. None of it. It's a huge sacrifice. And one final legal point on finding four, the word is adjacent. So you want to talk about houses that are blocks and blocks away, whatever, the property adjacent to it is impacted. So that, to me, that's a significant consideration, that one words matter. And that one word is very significant. Again, I appreciate all, all of your efforts. And I'm here.
Okay, Dana, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think that at this point, I'd like to just go ahead and let there be a quick rebuttal. And then we would go to public comment if there is anyone available or wanting that at some point here. So if you're watching and you want to make public, public comment or anybody else in the room, we're going to let the rebuttal take place and then that public comment. So I'm going to give you three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Um, you know, it's interesting because everything that's happening right now in the government and putting in the SB nine and the ADUs and all of that is because people want to develop their property. That's the bottom line. There's a view affected in this town council, probably every, every year, there's 20 views affected. This is, there's 11 two-story houses on that, on that hill. I've personally been through designer view here several times on Oakdale where there's an effect and a view in, in the project past. The, the key is, I think there has to be some kind of compromise. And in order to develop the property, like I said, we tried to compromise. We pushed the setbacks instead of putting our house right at five feet. They're already, their house is almost 20 feet away from the property line, 15 or 20 feet away from the property line already. That's 27 feet between our houses of light and air. There's no sun blocking their, their property at all. These are all things that we considered when we designed the house. But should we push our house back to our 25 foot yard setback, split our whole entire yard in half? So that they can preserve and change the whole entire dynamic of the neighborhood, which is totally irregular for any house that so that they can preserve a view that's this big out of one of their windows, even though the house is 27 feet away. And in, and in three years, they're not even going to see it because of the plants anyways, or a year anyways. So, you know, the subjective reviews are, instead of an objective review, we're hitting all the guidelines. We hit all the guidelines in our, in our first review with Phil. That's what, what we submitted. My wife was pregnant. I was literally going to the hospital. That's why I missed the meeting. I called Phil. I said, hey, we need to cancel that. I'm going to the hospital. My brother was out of town. So we missed the, the April 3rd meeting. I would have loved to have been there. We didn't, we didn't want to submit to the preliminary review because it never helped. And so Phil said, you really got to do this, Dave. You should really do this. Okay, Phil, we took his advice. We'll do it. And we tried to pull it off the agenda and weren't able to do that. But like I said, I was going to the hospital to, to give birth to my first sons. Wonderful. So, you know, the subjective review, just like Valerie had mentioned, is the whole issue here. And so there's a house that we're trying to build. If we go to the SB nine, which is the other option, then they're not going to have a view anyways. I can tell you that right now. And it will be a development project. Just like I said, I know that sounds horrible. That's a horrible thing. My little brother loves this neighborhood. He's built a community in this neighborhood and with the schools. That's the last thing we want to do. But that is the option that after we left this meeting, we were discussing and doing. That's the direction we were headed. So we're not going to put the house in the back of the yard. We're not going to pay a hundred thousand dollars to get no land. This is ridiculous. We're gonna, we're gonna either build this house the way it is, and if we do a redesign, it's going to be an SB nine. And so that's where I stand on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. We'll comment on this shortly, but let's go directly to public comment right now. So there's a gentleman in the room who would like to speak. So we're opening public comment. We're going to give you three minutes at the microphone, sir. If you could identify yourself, that would be great.
Yeah, Bruce Mace, my wife and I, Karen, live at 405. So we're directly across the street on the south side. And it's a tough process. You know, we empathize with the gauges and with our new neighbors and our new neighbors. But why I'm speaking tonight, and I've talked to a couple of the planners is the duration of time. The story polls have been up. They were hanging raggedy. I appreciate the fact that they got updated for this meeting, but they've been up since August of last year. We, as neighbors, have been looking at that. And there's a green wall, if any of you take a minute to drive by the site, and we're going to ask that that green wall on Oakdale be trimmed. It grows completely over the fence that you, we keep seeing in all the photographs. It's not there. It's buried in green from 10 feet down to about four feet, and it spills into the street over the curb. We are outgrown. We've got two kids and our house is way too big, so we have it on the market. And we just went through our three week, why isn't it selling? And this is not completely dependent on that, trust me, but one of the comments was made twice by two different brokers. And they said, yeah, it's, it's really hard to walk past all that when you're coming into, you know, a property that you're, you're trying to sell. So we just favorably ask that it be done, be done quickly, trimmed back to at least the fence out of the street and just made to look nice. And that's all. And then I hope this process works out for you real well. I hope it works out for the gauges and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. All right. So Claire, do we have anybody online?
It looks like there's no public attendees. Ivan, you're from the applicant team?
Yes.
So, okay, you have your hand up and you are a commenter, is that correct?
That's correct. I'm showing the screen and I would like to add a couple of words from my perspective. I, I look, I designed this property and I see no any restriction when it's block any kind of mountain or any kind of windows restriction when we can place. And we reduce a lot of amount of windows and we shift back from the setback as you saw before. And for me as young generation, I would like, if I build this house, I would like to have space for my children for so 1,000 square feet and have split backyard and front yard and have a little space over in the front and have a little space in the back. It's not the option for me as, as I have family, as John have. So from my perspective, we we fit in everything law require us even more. So I support the project. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. I see that it said there were two other participants with hands raised?
Yes, there's, I see Tom. I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
Hi, yeah, we can hear you.
All right. My name is Tom Rendell. I live 301 Chapman Drive, the homeowner at 301 Chapman Drive. So that's just opposite to the southwest of 400 Oakdale. I sent a question in by email as well. I know that there's been trees planted to the, to the west. There's those three trees and it looks like there's plans for more. What I'm curious about is a tree on that sort of southwest corner. I didn't see that in the plans, but that's really the direct view that we have across to the house and to the expanded house with these plans. So I was just curious you know, as to whether there are plans for planting a tree on that corner in some way that's going to, you know, keep keep in, you know, in keeping with so many of the houses around here, like, you know, you look around, you see trees.
Okay, is that your question or your commentary at this point? Okay. So we're going to record that question and he's asking about the trees that are on the Chapman side of the house there, right? Okay. Thank you. Who else do you have, Claire?
I don't see any other hands right now.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe before going to our comments, we could take a short break.
We certainly can, yeah. But let's see. We had essentially a gentleman there commenting that he was in support of the project. We had Bruce here commenting on asking about the planting over there at 400, right? And then we have a gentleman at 301 asking for some information, some information about the trees. Is that what I got out of that on Chapman?
Yes, I believe Bruce Mace was commenting about trimming existing vegetation that's on the adjacent to Oakdale Avenue so that pedestrians can easily walk by on the street and also expressing his desire that the story poles be removed. And then Tom Randall, who, who lives at 301 Chapman Drive asked about trees proposed. The landscape plan includes new trees along Chapman Drive in the landscape median. Many of those trees have been planted and additional ones are proposed. There, it currently is not a tree proposed at the southwest corner, kind of near the intersection. There's a variety of shrubs, but currently there is not a tree in that corner.
Okay, so that would answer his question about that. Yeah, all right. Okay. Before we go further, we have a request from Commissioner Vandell to take a short break. So we'll do that and we'll come back here at, we'll say eight 40 here. Thank you. All right. Thank you. We are back online and live in action here. So we're talking about the application for 400 Oakdale Avenue. And we are now at the point where the commission can discuss this. But before we get there, I want to look both applicant and neighbor represented by Dana here. And just try to summarize what I think I've heard for the commission's benefit and for us to consider here. I'm, I'm hearing that there is an tractable position on the applicant's behalf. They want to make no more concessions or discussions about anything else. Is that fair to say? If you want to reply, step up to the microphone, please. I would appreciate that.
Repeat that, please.
That you're in a position now where you're saying we are complete with our discussions and negotiations with 404. That we have put before the commission, the application as we see it. And we're in no mood or inclination to modify it to, or to continue any negotiation.
I'd say that's correct. We again have gone and compromised as much as we can, and we feel like there's no more compromises that are going to really make a big effect because of the vast difference between us. They want one thing and we want another, and we've tried to compromise. And again, that was the, kind of the discussion we had at the gauges home, which was, hey, we're willing to compromise and here's the things we're willing to compromise. And they sat there and listened to us and then they came back and said, no, this is the line you must bow to or not. And so that's where, you know, again, if there was minor things here or there, we would be open to being flexible, but I don't, I don't think there is. And that's where.
All right. So your, your brother said that they will not consider moving the house back or doing anything else?
We looked at that and, and the reality is, is moving the house back because of the 25 foot setback still completely blocks their view. And we went through that with Dana and showed her, you know, I have another view of the house moved back to the 25 foot setback and it's still completely blocking her view. And so we moved the house everywhere. We looked at every option. And again, the one story option as well. So this is not something that we took lightly or, or did not look at in every possible way to see how we could make it work. We really did. And we really wanted to make it work. But, you know, again, that's why we're here saying, you know what? We're compromising again, one more time for the sake of showing our earnest efforts. But the reality is, is we're never going to get to where they want us to be, unfortunately, which is again, that little 900 square foot strip of land.
All right. I appreciate that.
But it sounded like that was a two-part question because if you, Peter, in the town council have something to say or an adjustment that seemed reasonable, then of course we'd be willing to hear that. But I feel like the, after 11 months of trying to negotiate an email every two months, that the gauges is not productive.
Got it. Okay. Let me ask Dana to step up and address this. Thank you, Dana.
I'm sorry, question?
So the question is simply, they, that you've, you've said that there are some openings for you, but you're saying, they're saying that you didn't go beyond a certain level of conditions that you would still stand by having to have that access through the flag lot portion of it and that the conditions that they said were placed on it were unacceptable. So is that still true that you would still place all those conditions on that piece of property sale?
I mean, the two remaining conditions are the, the access point and then the view in the living room and the dining room mostly, right? And also on the porch, which I forgot to mention, the view from the porch is quite dramatic. So you know, I, I've noodled over this a lot in terms of how we could address the reservation. And I know that's very wonky, but it is actually a reservation because they're selling the property. They reserve the easement to themselves. I don't have an answer, but we're, we are absolutely willing to still be at the table.
All right. But that means with those conditions that you had placed on that possibility, is that correct?
The two, that access remain and the view, the view in the two rooms remain.
But, okay, so then there's other issues like price and all of that kind of stuff that would have to be worked out. I don't know. You wanted to, I don't know why we're, we're in this position here of trying to negotiate for you guys, and that's not something we should do. And we're not in that position.
I appreciate the I appreciate the third third-party neutral, to be frank.
So, you know, if it, what I'm hearing, uh, this is highly unusual for us to take this role here for me to say this kind of stuff is that you said you want a high dollar, they said low dollar, and there was no struck ground in between that would be an amenable price to them and for you. So.
That's correct. Right now, that's that's right. And in standard negotiations, we were at 100. They said one plus you pay half. We say 60, but you know, yeah, or I, from from, from my world, especially in a land use setting, that's, there's still room. But they they've been pretty clear. I will say a hearing, we'll give you $1 was pretty painful. But um, yes, there are other elements to whatever deal might be struck.
That was with the conditions that you had placed on it that uh were uh significant.
Those two, the access?
The, well, the conditions of taxes and uh access and all of that so that they couldn't really use the property for anything other than achieving that reduced setback back there.
Yes, that's right. I mean, maybe there's a possibility of, and I'm just really thinking about it tonight. And when we were talking about essentially an exclusive reservation, maybe there's a way to share that. But um, we haven't explored, meaning that they would have, you know, um, they would have access as well, right? You'd have to keep it as um ingress and egress. But that's the, I I always look for a a toehold, right? There's something in there, but we haven't looked at it yet.
Okay, well.
Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
So um, uh, I don't wanna get into much of a dialogue here beyond this, but thank you. And I'm just gonna say to both parties here that we're in a position where we're trying to find something that is better than what is on paper now for both parties, for you and for these guys here. So um, if we're gonna be stuck with trying to consider what's on paper, then we gotta know that. And it's gotta be certain that that's what we're dealing with. Um, maybe.
Understood.
And and we may have to then say, we want you guys to go back to the table. But that's a really, unless the parties are willing to do that.
We're willing to do it. We are willing, for sure.
So, and I don't know what that means for concessions on your part. And so these gentlemen have said they're willing, just now, they're willing to make some consideration for concessions, but I don't know what that might be. So, you know.
I mean, happy to do it and we.
We walk away from this tonight and say, you guys go back to the table and work this out, or we have to consider this on the basis of what we've got in front of us. And I don't know what that outcome will be. I really, I don't speak for the other commissioners. I don't know. So we're gonna get into dialogue with that. But I think we're at a point where we need to get to deciding whether you guys are gonna continue talking or not. I don't know if you've been in the same room since we last met. Uh, frankly, you've been, uh, you know, having a problem with getting good communication here. So um, I think we all hear what each party wants and the emotions have gotten uh the better of this, I think. So um, I don't know where we are uh with either of you guys. So um, go ahead, step up, please.
Peter, I have a question of you. When you asked your question of the grounds, I guess what I heard coming back was that even if they were able to move it, it wouldn't help.
Okay, that's an, but if they moved it to the 25-foot setback, right?
So there is a way.
If they got the flag lot out of the way, they would get a better setback and then it would not be in the way.
Okay, cuz that's not what I thought I heard.
Go ahead, sir.
That's correct. There there is no way except for that reservation.
Okay.
Again, you know, I um, I was as flexible as I could be along the way. And what I mentioned to them was a 10-foot wide easement is not enough for a handicap parking space. You need 13 feet. And so what I said to them was, look, why don't we make it a five-foot easement? And we will put a handicap parking space in front of our home, the first spot in front of our home, so that you guys could come and and use that space. And um, we would pave the way to your home through the backyard and create the most safe and usable access possible. Um, and I would be willing to pay for five feet of that land and move the house further back. Unfortunately, 10 feet of land that I have no rights or use for is very difficult for me to pay for. Um, I made my offer to um Dana Dean, like I said, on June 16th. She did not respond. I asked for comment. She didn't respond and I waited. I I talked to Martha and said, Martha, how long do you think is reasonable to come back to the table and work this out and move forward and close this? And.
So what I hear you saying is that you would make that offer. Would you do that now to Dana now and she could acknowledge that offer, yes or no or something?
Yeah, in fact, I've said several times, let's just get Eli here and just talk as neighbors and just work this out and we could be done in five minutes. Instead, it's months of chasing down an answer.
I got that. Okay. So I'm gonna ask Dana to say something about this. So um, Dana, would you stand up, please? Oh, here, here we are.
First, um.
Can you guys not use that as a parking, get a five-foot wide? Can you not use it as parking, get a five-foot wide paved path at the back? And would that be acceptable to you?
So I don't have authority to say yes to that tonight. Um, we did look at it and uh, I'm gonna apologize for the delays, but I think everybody has already heard that um, these were significant, very, very significantly challenged months. I don't, actually, the whole year and a half for the gauges because of their um elder family members and the tornado that they lost their house and all that. I think you've all heard that. So. But um, it is correct that it took a long time for us to look at these various things. I don't have authority to say yes to that tonight. I have authority to say we will still be at the table. Again, I'm still sort of thinking through that with non-exclusive easement, not for the whole public or anything, but you know, potentially that's a thing. Do you know what I mean? The the 10 feet, what we were, what we have proposed is an exclusive easement or reservation, exclusive to the gauges or whoever owns their property. It might be possible to make it shared between the two folks. The um, they're each gonna be 7,500 square feet properties now, right? So that's a possibility. Um, but we have to, devil's in the details. We have to look at those things.
Well, the requirement or the, that would satisfy the gauges for view would be that there's really the hu, the the house is pushed back to the five-foot setback. That would leave five foot of that 10-foot lot.
No, no, maybe I'm confused.
So uh, correct me if I'm wrong here, Martha, that if they do purchase that and it becomes a side yard setback, the house can be taken to that five-foot setback. Is that correct?
The rear yard setback for 400 Oakdale Avenue would be five feet instead of 25 feet.
Right. Okay. So that setback would be where they could build all the way to that point. And that would um help move the house all the way to that point if they could.
And I think the negotiation.
But the 10 feet is still preserved.
10, 10 feet.
The 10 feet, the parcel two is still preserved as for ingress and egress, no matter who has it.
It would not be. It would mean that um, that they, you'd be giving up five of that 10 feet so the house could go back that far. Otherwise, what would be the point of selling the lot if they can't use that five feet, right? Or or, I don't know, guys, you tell me, that if you got the house pushed back to 10 feet in that flag lot instead of 25 feet, does that make a difference?
Again, assess these possibilities with with uh Dana and and said, look, if we're, if we come back to five feet, it has a lot of value. If it comes to 10 feet, it doesn't have a lot of value. And we looked at those uh broker's opinion of value and they were like, she said $100,000.
No, that's not my question. If you would answer my question here. If if the house got moved back to 10 foot, leaving that parcel intact as it is, that you'd be getting 15 feet off the 25-foot setback. So.
We would already have that 25, I mean, we wouldn't be getting any more than we already have.
I get it. The the ADA would be in that setback. So.
Yeah.
But if the house were flipped, right, and you put the ADA in front and you put the house all the way to the back there at the 10-foot mark. Is what I'm saying making any sense?
It doesn't make sense, Peter, but there's no, there's, there's no reason for us to do that. And we don't want it. We we even offered, we said, hey, look, we'll sign an easement, but when they die, the easement is canceled. We don't want an easement on property that we have to buy anyways.
In perpetuity.
It is, it's a, is a restriction. And the whole thing is that if that's the real use of what they're trying to do, then we're trying to come up with a solution to help them do it and even offer a path. They have an ADA path down from the front of their house, isn't that correct? Don't you have wheelchair access from the front already? What do you need from?
Correct, they do.
But let's.
From the side, I don't.
And I'm just trying to get this backyard straight back there. So.
Exactly. But I'm, again, I I let that be what it is. And I'm like, okay, if you want access from the side, that's fine. Then we will make it happen. In fact, if you absolutely need that 10 feet, then we'll give that to you too. You know, I tried to push it back five feet. I was like, look, then we will be absolutely not encumbering your view whatsoever. And our ADU will push the other side and the house will push this side. And where your view is obstructed, now you have even more view. It will be even better than it was before, which she did, or they, they, they don't seem to think that there's no, there is any value in that, getting that additional view and no impact. And again, I have tried very hard to give it to them, but I also can't pay $60,000 for something that I I'm not getting, right? I'm paying them. And that's what I tried to say during my speech was that I'm not getting anything for this land except moving the house, which I'm willing to do and I'm willing to pay to redesign it again for the third time. Spend another year. My children are growing by the time this thing is done.
So.
Might all be gone. So that's where I'm like, I'm willing to make a sacrifice here.
And he's tried 20 different kinds of negotiations, Peter. You're, you're thinking of some, which is great. He's tried 20.
Yeah, you're thinking of all the things I've thought of and pitched to her or them and said, look. So anyways, I'll let you continue.
Well, okay, so um, if I try to summarize this, um, you're saying that you don't wanna pay $60,000 for that, essentially. That's what I hear. And so um, is the devil in the details here? Or is there something that can be arrived at um before we try to take it under advisement and try to come to a discussion, go through a discussion and come to a decision about it or recommend um that something else happened? And I don't know what that might be. The commissioners might have other recommendations to place upon this for some reason. So we would, we would get to that, but we gotta get this off the table, whether this is a viable option or not, since there seems to have been some sort of crack in the door. Let's get to it. Or, you know, you guys say, no, we're not doing it, or we can get something out of it. I don't know.
You know, again, I was at the table and I was saying, let's work this out. And her coming now and saying, yeah, we're ready, is it, in my opinion, very unfair because I have been, and if you read my emails, you'll see I have said, Dana, what's going on? Dana, 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 Dana. And that's where.
I I hear you. I understand that. I would, I'm just asking to see if you can say, looking forward, what you would or would not do. That's what we have to get to. We can't rethink this.
Yeah, I I can't pay $60,000 for the land and redesign and, yeah. So I can't do that, unfortunately. If they were willing to come to where we are, I would be, I would love that.
All right. What is that number?
Uh, I made like 20 different offers to them, you know, again, assuming we got a little bit of the land or, you know, I, I, in fact, I.
And I hear, I'm gonna say Dana is saying she can't come, she can't represent the client tonight for some of this stuff. So um, um, we have the opportunity to determine or see if you guys can work this out or not. I don't know.
May may clarify some, something for me.
Go ahead.
Just with the question. So from what I've heard from you earlier, what Peter's trying to do is it sounds like you are willing to commit if the um owners of 404 would allow you to put the house five feet setback. Let's say, we're gonna forget about the 10 feet for now for a second. And if they're gonna say, okay, fine, we are okay with the five-foot easement and the parking as you have offered in front of your house for the ADA purposes, it sounds like before you said you are willing to compromise on that condition, um, considering that it still would cost you redesign, it still would cost you to do the rework. Are we understanding that correctly?
Right. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Say that, say that for him. I didn't hear him. He's.
He, he said, that's the deal we already tried to put together and, you know, and that's where um, it's really heartbreaking, but I think we're at an impasse. And again, I wanted to make this work. And when Dana presented this to us from the beginning, I was extremely excited. I was like, wow, my gosh, we found a way to give them what they want.
Okay.
And so.
We're gonna, I'm just gonna say, we're not gonna hear, go back through that. So, all right. Thank you. Andy, you wanna say something?
Yeah. Question, if if this, if this flag lot or this piece were actually, if this went through um, and the easement or the reservation were good for so long as they needed it, for for however long they are alive, and then the reservation goes away, there should be some residual value there if.
Absolutely. And I also pitched that to them and said, look, if you guys are willing to put it, you know, when Elizabeth passes away, the easement goes away. Or they sell the house, the easement goes away. I, again, I looked at it from every angle, but yeah, I appreciate that.
And Dana, question for you. This is a tough, I understand, I'm just coming into this at the 11th hour, so I'm uh getting up to speed. When I think about the value of this and where both sides are at, I do think that there's value. If this, if this went through, um, the gauges are getting a better view uh, and that, and their house goes to the back of the lot at 400.
A better view than they have now?
To the west, would that not be the case? Because currently, there's a house there and where the house is currently, that would be the swimming pool area or open space.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
I would think that there's some value to the gauges and an increase in property value. So from my perspective, it seems like there's actually less, it could be closer to a negotiation that could work for both sides. That's, that's what I'm thinking. Because otherwise, otherwise, we're looking at approving the project as proposed or not. It seems like, it seems like we're at the end of the negotiations where there's design revisions made to try to appease the gauges. So that's how I see it.
I would say firstly, certainly, I I understand now what you were saying. And yes, that's part of the calculation. There are a number of, there's benefits and detractions from, from where this house sits, right? Um, that's absolutely correct. If, in fact, the house is built, that would be absolutely correct. Um, and it's part of the alchemy, if you will, of of what went into the, the various offers that went back and forth.
Okay.
Did. And we, and one of the, one of the delays I'll just mention is that John very quickly, and I thought very professionally, prepared um a um a site plan, if you will. Actually, I thought it was in the staff report. It wasn't showing what it would be if it was five feet, if there was a five-foot easement. what it would be if it was five feet, if there was a five-foot easement remaining, as he's just described, what the view would be, the view would be broader, right? And then what it would be at ten feet. And it took a lot of thought to make a decision about how significant the ten-foot access was in comparison to the expanded view. They will lose view in the backyard if we do that, but they're willing to do that, right?
But they pick up views from the house, obviously, so.
Yeah, but it's, it's, you know, and it's also five feet away from the big house, five feet away from their backyard. So it's, it'll be imposing, but that was a compromise they were willing to make, for sure, in order to avoid either, either direction that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna just restate that this is an unusual process tonight for the commission and staff and everybody here. We don't usually get into this kind of thing. But seeing that there's this sort of vague and unclear aspect of the negotiation, we needed to really plummet steps a little bit. So that said, I'm gonna let that stand where it is. There's something there. I don't know what it is. But we also have is this application for a house as it's been submitted to us. And we got to look at that. So I know it's late. We've been here a while, but let's talk about that house as it is applied for. And put aside this option for moving the house. But we have to have a discussion about the application as it is. So it's a hard thing to do. I know after all, we've just been through. But we need to get some thoughts down on paper for all these folks about what we think about the application as it is. And I'm not asking for anybody to say thumbs up or down with this, but we need to put some information out on the table for the applicant and the neighbor about what we think about this application. So let's start in with this. So I'm going to start with you, Dan, on this.
Okay, thanks, Peter. First of all, I want to, I want to acknowledge the changes that you've made to the design to try to address a number of these issues. But unfortunately, reducing the number of windows, reducing the ridge line, none of those things really addressed the issue of the views, which is, I think, the fundamental issue on the table here. But I do want to acknowledge that you've, you've tried with what you felt you could do. I agree with the staff report that the main design review findings are three and four, and that I think the current design is consistent with the general plan one, two, five, and six. Relative to design finding three, the general plan calls for the minimization of light, privacy, view, security, which I don't think is an issue here, significant negative impacts of views and neighboring properties. However, the general plan places clear emphasis on balancing and, you know, view preservation shall be balanced with a property and owner's right to develop. So that's where I'm coming from. How do we get to a point where we're balancing your right to build what you want to build with preserving some of the views from the living room and the dining room, which are, what they have said is the most important thing to them. I don't think privacy is an issue. The proposed fence and landscaping provides privacy at the lower level. There's only three windows in the upper level and the applicant has removed two. And in this kind of small lot neighborhood, I think the expectation is there, there will be windows facing property. So I don't think that's an issue. Relative to shading, I think the shading studies show that the impact in, again, in this sort of urban residential area is, is to be expected and is actually quite minor. So I don't think that's an issue. And I'll come back to the view issue in a minute. But harmonious design, finding of number four. I think you've done a very sensitive design that's very consistent with the neighborhood. I don't really have any issues with materials or color or the design. And I think the, the size you proposed in the two thousand nine or seventy-one feet is consistent with the majority of the properties in the neighborhood. So I think, you know, given your investment here, I think that that, I think it's not unreasonable that you're building a house of this size. So so that comes back to the view question in my mind. And again, I will state that I think it's really a matter of balancing. The view, the current proposal does have a significant impact on key views from four oh four. Both the living room and dining room is the most important to the current owners. These views can be characterized as borrowed views, which means that they, they depend on the neighboring property being undeveloped. Well, this property was built over a hundred years ago or around a hundred years ago, and one cannot expect that nothing is going to happen on the adjacent property in these hundred years in today's economy and today's need for housing. So I think it's reasonable that there would be development of this property at the scale you're suggesting. I, I laid, one thing I have not seen from the applicant is an actual visualization from views from this property of the house. We have the story poles, but the story poles don't actually show you what the house will look like from their house. And I haven't seen anything in like that that shows what would happen if the house was moved back to the twenty-five rear yard setback. I laid a piece of trace over your floor plan, moved the house back to the twenty-five-foot property line. I took the view cones that you showed in that slide. And it seems to me that it would open up the view from the living room and between a half and two-thirds of the view from the dining room if you move the house back. You've stated that's not true, but I haven't seen any evidence of that. So I would say that moving the house back to the property line setback, you could keep the same size house, the same design of the house. You could move the ADU unit to the frontage on Oakdale, and you'd have room for patio and pool. And if you wanted to spend the money to redesign, you could have the patio and pool face that part of the house if you flipped it one hundred and eighty degrees, which would give you sunlight, southern sunlight on the patio, on the pool, and southern sunlight on your kitchen and family room, which you don't have now. They face north. And actually, the patio and the patio in particular is shaded during the spring, fall and winter equinox. So it would be a benefit to do that if that's true, if my analysis is correct. So I see that, I don't see that the current proposal is a balance between property development and preservation of views.
Okay, so when you say that, you're saying that the the right for the, or the preservation of view is a necessity, or do you see it that way?
I'm saying that I think there's things the applicant could do, if my analysis is correct, that could give them development they want with the house size they want and preserve not all of the view that the four oh four owner wants, but preserve forty-five percent of, seventy-five percent of it.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good commentary, Dan. Thank you very much.
You're, you're suggesting that the house as design moves back into the lot and abides by the rear setback.
Yes.
The transfer.
Yes.
Okay. More on that later, Dan. So you're over there, Valerie, thinking. So what are you thinking?
All right. Well, so I do agree with a couple of the Dan's comments here, but I what I'm thinking is that the view specifically and the findings on the view is subjective. And I believe that we all received an email from Ann who mentioned that the view and view that is over other people's property is considered to be a borrow of the U. If, if I'm correct in, in the statement. And so to, to me, anything, to assume that nineteen twenties house will not be developed into something new, a little bit higher, even if it's a one-story building, is a silly statement, right? Like, we cannot assume that it will be developed into something. The ridge will be closed. It is unfortunate for the four oh four Oakdale that they are situated lower than the four hundred one. And, but it's not the fault of the applicant's property, right? Like, where are they trying to develop the house? Anything that will be developed in that house, even if moving or anything, it will close the view either from the backyard, either from the office, where I think actually from where the house is right now, the best view is from the office. It's not even from the living room or from the dining room. That was my personal observation. So I feel like anything that will be developed on that land will close the best view, which is out of the office. With, with that said, I feel like the finding three is very subjective. And regardless of what we decide here, except that reverse lot condition, will not be satisfactory to preserve the view. Another thing that I wanted to point out is that it is interesting to find out with other properties that are two-story high, whether or not they have the view, because the great, the way the grading of the land is going through, those houses are appearing to be one-story high. They are closing each other, they're large houses. So it seems to me that all of them do not have access to the view, therefore considering that four oh four is more of a situational privilege in a way to get that view. So to me, it sounds like argument about, I totally understand the gauges and they try to preserve, they've been living with that view for a long time. But at the same time, they don't own it. And they probably the only house on the lot that is privileged to have it just because they happen to have a neighboring house that hasn't been developed since nineteen twenties. So to me, it sounds that that particular finding is very subjective in this particular situation and challenged. The four, on the other hand, and this is where I have a little bit difference of opinion with Dan, is that four, on the other hand, I feel like the house is a large scale for that lot. And not because this, the house design is beautiful. What you guys have come up to is really beautiful and the use of the land is beautiful. I understand the growing family needs and the space. However, my perspective on this is that the corner, corner lot scale of that house is a little bit too large. And it's not because other houses are not as large. They are, and probably some of them are bigger. But unfortunately for this particular lot is that the other houses are graded down and your house will be almost kind of on the flat, right? And it will be more exposed to the proportion and to the height. So I understand the design decisions that were made. It's definitely certain style that dictate that house design, but I was wondering if any particular other style was considered to make it a little bit more harmonious with the developments that are around that particular corner lot. With that said, I understand the investment and time that you have put to develop all of this. So obviously, this is something that has to be strongly considered. But my personal challenge is to find the finding four. But again, that's why I asked in the beginning, I feel like it's a subjective opinion and therefore I don't think that I would oppose to the project strictly on that particular finding. I would definitely would love to hear what other commissioners would say. But either way is just, you know, it's a challenging situation to be in and it's a challenging lot. So I appreciate both parties investing so much time. And it's unfortunate that the commission has to mitigate and litigate for both parties, but we are where we are. And as designed, we have to come to the decision today.
Valerie, thank you. Those are good comments and well said. I appreciate that. So I'm going to come over to here to Andy and put you on the spot.
Thank you, Peter. And wow. As you guys may or may not know, this is my first commission hearing, so this, this is a tough one to jump into and I appreciate what has transpired. I know it's a long, painful process for both sides. And I understand the concerns from, from both sides. So what a tough one. I am still hopeful that there is possibility that this flagged lot piece could be transferred and that that's something that could be worked up with, between both parties, because I honestly feel like that's, that's the best middle ground. I just don't see that, I understand the design compromises that have been made along the way. I just don't see where there's more tweaking that's going to get to a place where the gauges are happy with their views, because they're not, they're just not going to have a view if it's a two-story house. So I think that's a really, I think that's a really difficult one. As far as the findings go, I think as far as finding number four goes, I think this house is completely in context, in context of the neighborhood. I think that the diagram is very helpful to see where there's two-story houses, a few one-story houses, and even a three-story house within the same block. So given the height, given that there's nothing that requires a variance as far as the height and the setbacks, I'm okay with finding number four with the context. Finding number three is the, is the crux of the problem here and the impasse, because that's a matter of balancing your rights to develop your property according to the zoning code against the rights that the neighbor has, which includes views. I think the privacy, I think the privacy is a non-issue as far as I can tell. Natural light I don't see as a major problem. I think it's all about the views. And I'm not sure, I appreciated all the comments that Dan had, but I'm not sure that staying with the twenty-five-foot rear setback is going to move the needle enough to make it work. I think that would, that would only work if that could be a five-foot setback back there instead of a twenty-five-foot setback. So I guess in conclusion, I think the house is, I think the house as proposed is, is pretty well designed. I appreciate all that went into it. I appreciate all the iterations. And I think that there's a lot to be said for this, this notion of borrowed views. I think in an ideal world, when anybody's purchasing a property, they're taking into consideration the adjacent parcels and what could be built there. If you buy a house next to a vacant parcel, you can't just assume that you're going to have those views forever. It's just not going to happen. And this is an analogous situation. This has already been discussed because it's a one-story house that exists there now. It's existed there for years, but of course, there's a thirty-foot height limit. So it's well within, I believe, the rights of these guys to build a two-story house. So that's, those are my thoughts.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Margaret, last but not least, so I look forward to hearing what you have to say about this. Is your microphone on? There you go.
Anyway, it's, now I have an echo. It's the idea that it's the, it talks about living space and the living space compared to the land um, square footage of the houses in the neighborhood as compared to the proposed house. So what um, what's on the plan here says that the living area is two thousand six hundred ninety-four square feet, which is quite a bit different than what everyone else is seeing as a square footage of the house. Why is that?
The, the square footage of the house as revised is two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one, and that includes the one-car garage. So the, the living area would be less than that, I think, off the top of my head. You know, the garage square footage.
And are the other houses when the living areas and the land compared to the land of the houses that you've compared this to, do those include the garages or not? I'm just saying the accuracy of this is. I can't hear you.
He just put it on Zillow.
From Zillow.
Yeah.
I see. In my mind, this isn't, is not good information. Zillow is not anything that.
So it's, it's, he's just saying that the information is, is public information from Zillow and it's the best he can do. So um, and he's not required to go do that. They put that on there as sort of a.
Right. Well, he was, I, I, okay, it goes to my feeling that for the size of the, of the lot that you have seven hundred square feet, the house is too big. It's just compared to other houses in the neighborhood, it just looks, whether it is in square footage or not, it looks too big. And I think that uh, the houses that you compared it to that are bigger are on bigger lots, most of them. Uh, I kind of looked at it and most of those lots are on seven thousand five hundred square feet lots, foot lots. So um, I'm also looking at comparing it to the houses on Chapman, since that's the front of your house is on Chapman, really. And um, like, two forty-seven Chapman is fourteen sixty-one square feet of living space. Two forty-three Chapman is nine hundred and one square feet of living space. Two thirty Chapman is seventeen twenty-five square feet of living space. Your house is much bigger. It's, it's topping out all the records, all the required um, numbers. As the, the um, staff report points out on panels on table one, the proposal is um, it, it's really topping out all the, it fits within the uh, site development standards, but that isn't a given and you get an automatic pass. That's just the top edge that we're looking at. That's my feeling about the size of the house. It's a very beautiful house, but it needs to be on a bigger lot, in my opinion. It all comes down to finding three and four, so uh, number four, I guess I would say that I don't consider it to be um, a good structure for that site plan, for that site. And I don't consider it to be, really be looking like it's in scale. It certainly is in character. It's a beautiful home and it's a, it, it has a lot to um, to recommend it. Finding three, I think Peter knows that I know a lot about views and feelings about views. And it's that the view here is, uh, it's a small view. It's a borrowed view. But it is the only view that the house has. Um, and so that takes on a greater significance to the people living inside the house. If that's all they have to recommend as a view. And so uh, I think that the proposed house doesn't recognize the significance of that and the significance of having even a little view of Mount Tam, which is um, primary in, in, in what people look for, I think, in this area. I think that the other thing that sort of uh, not sort of, but the other thing that's massive in this or needs to be considered here is that it's not only the view, it's a big wall that's going up in front of what the people have as their yard. What the, what the gauges have as their yard and their um, the front, what they consider to be the front of their house. It's going to be a great big wall of some other house. And, you know, I do think that any person who buys a property has the right to develop it within the parameters of, of the place they've uh, chosen to live. But I think that um, the significance here is, is tremendous to the gauges and to people buying a home in this area. And having that great big wall in front of you and then losing your view, I think is a tremendous loss to people who um, are living in, in four oh four. So I, I think it's essential, absolutely essential, that you go back to the table and start thinking of ways to work out that what seems to me a, almost a perfect answer to everybody's problem here. It saves you the time and energy down the line of um, reverting to SB uh, that I really don't think you want to do. And it saves the uh, gauges their view and their way of living, um, their, their enjoyment of their property and their home. Um, and I think that you guys can work it out. I think that um, everybody's kind of dug in their heels at this point. And I think that there have been some terrific ideas proposed and I think you can make it work. I just really do.
Okay, that's somewhere, that's your input at this moment, then. Everybody else has put in what they want to say till we get to the next phase of this. All right, so um, we all know up here that these are the hardest ones about uh, views. And often there's not a winner or there, but there's a compromise in there somewhere. I wish I could point to that compromise and say we know what that is. We don't. To uh, the point of Margaret, at the uh, maximums for the house have been met in every which way. So um, you've designed a house that is just under the maximums in height FAR in almost every way, and it's not a right, those uh, maximums are set as the ceiling, but um, you know, we try not to say you get all of these things. We don't, we don't, you don't get all of them by right in some way. It's a, it's a subjective decision for us to grant those or to approve those. That's just a comment on that portion of this. I think everybody has acknowledged here that the property can and should be developed and will be developed in a way that does have an impact on four oh four um, beyond their current view that they have. Something has to go there. Something will impact it. It is a given as communities grow and a house from nineteen oh ought has to be replaced with something else. It said, um, obstructing a neighbor's light in view is not a right, and it's not necessarily in this case a right of four oh four to have that view. So it's a two-handed um, viewpoint here, yes and no. A neighbor can't be so obstructionist to the other neighbors to say I'm blocking your light and view. But on the other hand, there, everybody has said it, that it is not a given view uh, of particularly given the right of development. What I notice about the views in four oh four is that unless you're sitting down within four feet of the window or close or standing in front of the window, you don't get the view particularly. But um, to Valerie's point, when you are in that study back there, you get more light in view back there than almost anywhere else in those other two rooms. But if the house moved back, that would be impacted um, by the house moving back. So um, I think that uh, it's too bad that uh, a variance for a rear yard setback doesn't work. That would solve the problem in some ways, but I do agree with Andy, Andy here, that if you guys had the possibility of coming to an agreement about flipping the house and moving it back, that would be the best for all parties. If you could come to that agreement and make it happen, gosh, this would solve everybody's problem. They would keep a view. They would keep their light at the front doors they walk in and you guys would get what you want. It just would be flipped. So um, I'm going to disagree with Margaret about the square footages of things. I don't think the house is that exceptional for the area. The staff report says that fifty percent of the homes are between two and three thousand square feet. So that's, that's what they've assessed by reading that off the data that the town has for these homes. Yes, nine are less than two thousand square feet. It's very hard for anybody to build and live in a two thousand or less square foot home anymore. Or particularly if you've got a family. So I think it's an expectation now that people need in excess of under two thousand feet. They need to exceed that to have a livable house these days. So where are we? Well, we're at the point where the commissioners have all expressed some ideas about the existing uh, plans. Uh, nobody has said um, yea or nay definitively. Our expectation is to direct staff what to do with deliberation here about what's the next step. So. Go ahead. What do you want to say?
I just have a question from Martha. Uh, when you were looking at various alternatives and so forth, did you uh, have the opportunity to study the alternative of moving the house back to the twenty-five-foot setback and what impact that would have on views?
I did not.
Thank you.
I have another question to clarify as well before we vote. If there is a, let's say, uh, the applicant and the neighbors decide to proceed with communication in regards to the uh, purchase of that additional land. Um, either is a timeframe, because I think the concern that we all heard from the applicant is that the, there is a lapse of response. And it sounds like it's, it has been a year uh, for the applicant and it's not fair uh, to the, to them as well. So um, if there is a compromise that need to be achieved, let's say we vote no today, right? But if there is a compromise that we are relying on that could be achieved in the future, is there is a timeframe that can be held by that? Because there, I mean, obviously, um, you know, they are trying to build the home before the kids grow, so that's not fair to them. How, are we doing something about it? Like, is there is anything that we um, at the staff level could mitigate that, help with that, to achieve that, to help them achieve that compromise?
I think the commission could ask both parties how set it to amount of time that the commission thinks is appropriate to have ongoing dialogues. And you know, staff needs a little bit of time to obviously write a staff report and do a notice. Um, so that would factor in probably an additional two weeks um, to when a hearing would be scheduled.
Okay, unless we did it to a date certain.
I was just going to suggest you, you continue it to a date certain, and if the at, if the parties haven't come to an agreement by then, you could commit to an up or down vote so that the applicant can uh, know where he stands.
Okay. Andy?
The variance. I understand that the staff could not support a variance because there's not, um, it doesn't meet the criteria of a hardship. However, um, if the applicant wanted to apply for a variance, that, that, that decision would be made by the planning commission as to whether the variance is granted. Is that correct?
Would say, yes. If they apply, we would bring it to the planning commission. However, there are state and uh, both state law and um, uh, the, and our own town code would require the planning commission to make certain findings based on evidence in the record. And, and that's where staff and myself have some serious doubts.
Right, but the planning commission can basically decide with staff or against staff?
Yes, of course, you can. And if, if either of the parties, of course, here don't care for the planning commission's decision, they can appeal it to council.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, and where we are then is that we have differing opinions up here about um, the suitability of the uh, the project, and there's very, there's gray areas to it, but we're not going to land on that tonight if we can say that we continue this to a date certain, that two parties would sit down and negotiate. And if we went, say, in four weeks to the first of October, and if you haven't arrived at a decision, then um, staff would come back uh, with a uh, report to us about that, but staff has to see whether that's even possible.
Caution uh, the, the commission that even when a real estate deal, which is ultimately what this is, even if the basic terms are decided, it can take weeks to draft the documents to both parties' satisfaction. Drafting the documents is not a problem. Getting agreement between both parties is the problem.
Right. All right, so um, the applicant and the neighbor Dana have to stand here and say whether that's okay. If you don't agree to that, then we'll have to direct staff to do something. So what do you guys want to do? Do you want to go to the table and come back to a date certain with this?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's, would it be the planning commission meeting next month? Is that?
It might be the, it would be up to staff here to say what that date might be, because they have a calendar to deal with and we don't.
Yeah, I think the soonest opportunity we could bring something forward would be the last meeting in October.
Okay, so that's six weeks.
I'm sorry, the date?
Green date would likely be October twenty-eighth, the last meeting in October, but staff would need to know if an agreement was reached. I would say by October fourteenth, so that we could prepare the necessary information and do the noticing, or I guess we don't need to notice. Or I guess we don't need to notice.
That's acceptable to the, to our.
Okay. So do you guys want to go down that road? Here's the other side of this coin is that there's no document in front of us tonight to give you approval or not, or to deny it. So we would have to direct staff to come back to us with a resolution of some kind or something. And that's at least two weeks, four weeks?
You mean of when we would need to know?
No, disregarding a negotiation, if we said to you guys tonight, okay, let's prepare something for consideration.
It would most likely be that same date because we have some other items in mind.
All right, so hearing that, gentlemen. Okay, so if we disregarded a negotiation, we have, staff has to come back to us with a document for us to discuss because there's no resolution in front of us now, right? This was a meeting to consider and provide staff for direction. So do you know what I'm saying? There's not a document, there's no resolution for us to say this is approved or not. It's in the staff report, it says that, and we have to direct staff what to do. So that would mean according to staff, that it would be that second meeting in October that we would do that. That's correct, yeah. It says, it says that in the staff report. Yeah.
It was, staff took a neutral recommendation, so we did not prepare either a denial or approval resolution. And then we were asking the commission to provide feedback if they could make the required findings. And then staff would return with the appropriate resolution based on feedback received tonight. They could provide direction and then staff would return with a resolution for formal adoption based on the feedback.
Yeah, so when the resolution comes back before us, it's, it's not a complete rehearing. It's just a, we consider it, we talk it through, and then we would vote on it at that point.
You know, can I say something really quick? We spent 11 months going down every single avenue we possibly could with the gauges and before that talked to them endlessly about the project. I don't, Dana is perfectly happy stretching this out forever, as far as I can tell. But I don't see the gauges saying that they're willing to, the, the only negotiation we could have is if you say yes, and then we can go back and say, they're going to say yes, do you want to actually make a deal with us? That's the deal. Otherwise, we're going to go back and it's going to be spinning our wheels. And by the time she adds in all her stuff to the, to the deal, we're not going to take it because it's going to be just like it is now, so heavily swayed to their side, it's not worth it. And so that's the, the experience in the history we've had.
I understand that's the experience. Dana has said that she's willing to go back.
Dana is, Dana, alls we've asked for is a simple conversation where we can have a conversation with Eli and say, let's actually work out a deal. If she's willing to say that she'll sit down with Eli and we can actually have a conversation with him and work out a deal instead of through her, who is a lawyer who's perfectly fine continuing to get.
So let's just refresh this, she said she's willing to get this.
And we're willing to do that if she can guarantee that Eli's at the meeting and we can actually talk to him about a deal to, to get a resolution, not spend.
No, I, I understand, you guys have been down a long path here. But Dana, is that the fact? Can you do that? Can you get this gentleman present? Or get him to be present enough to, in direct negotiation with these guys?
I, I, it's challenging because of his circumstances right now, but I believe I can. And we'll work hard to do that. I, I will say, and I appreciate Chair that you have throughout the proceedings admonished folks from making derogatory comments. My job is to do the best thing for my client. And the best thing for my client would be to resolve this, and that is what I think about. That's why I sit here noodling on changes to easements and everything else. I'm an elected official myself, I take my ethical obligations very seriously. And I do not appreciate this consistent gnawing at the idea that somehow we are acting in bad faith. We absolutely are not. He is sacrificing a lot and I am putting a lot of effort into this. That's a false narrative.
Okay.
So, but yes, I, I believe I can get him to the table. To my mind, it makes the most sense to fashion the agenda, topics, everything else before we do that. And then secondly, I will commit to having the work done during the time period that we're talking about. I can, I can accomplish that. Thank you.
All right, so we're, we're in a, a moment here where in 10 minutes, we have to vote to extend this meeting to 10:30. Then, beyond that, this would mean that if we do let you guys go forward with it, you would have to come back to the table with all of that signed and sealed in a way that staff can actually move forward with something by October 14th.
We would, we would like a meeting in the next two weeks.
Yeah.
And they.
All right, so we don't get involved in that. And I'm going to ask poor staff to beat on you guys to adhere to a meeting schedule and do that. And they can set that so that there's some discussion this week about the date and what's on the agenda for that meeting. And you guys have got to write down what those things are. It's about the access, it's about all that stuff on that lot. And you have to change the terms. Each of you have to change the terms, that's a fact. It can't be either of what you want, all or none. Is that clear? Do we, do we get that, guys? You know, so, but I, there are suggestions that the easement be lifted after death or sale of the lot, that's reasonable, it seems to me, right? All of those things have to be a part of the table on this discussion.
Peter, if there, if you're not going to vote tonight and then we're going to be continued to October 28th or whatever is, what are we going to have a vote then? And are we going to be ready to move on and, and get this done or what?
Yeah, the thing is that if they, if you come back to the table with an agreement on that date.
Well, if there's no agreement, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I, I would like an agreement. We would love to put the property back on the easement and do, and do all that we tried our hardest. But if there's no agreement, what, what happens on the 28th? We come back here and you say, well, we don't have a, a suggestion of approval? And then we do this again?
Let me ask staff here. So if we got to a meeting, next meeting or the following meeting, and there is a lack of movement on these two parties, if they could say to us, we're deadlocked, it's not going to happen.
Oh, are you asking Anna?
Well, at that point, we'll be right where we are tonight.
Right.
And at that point, the commission will have to decide as a body whether or not it can make the findings required for approval of the design review application. And staff, I'm afraid, is going to find itself right where we are tonight, which is to say, we won't have a recommendation. Your, the commission would have to look at the evidence in the record and make a determination to the question of the applicant. Because of all of that, we won't be able to present you with a draft resolution. So there would need to be more direction to staff.
Go ahead, Amy.
So Martha has volunteered in a way to see if we can prepare both resolutions for you. So, and I will say, October 28th, on that agenda, we do have a preliminary hearing for 165-unit housing project. So that is a pretty full agenda. So when we said October 28th, we thought this would be a decision that's basically already been made and we're formalizing. So if it is going to be a meeting where, for instance, if a negotiation has not come to fruition and we have two resolutions before you to approve or deny, that is going to be a lengthy item. So we may want to consider a November date for that, is my only issue there, but.
Well, let me ask you this, that it's a, it's a public hearing, so we would have to, in theory, hear presentation and public comment on it. But I think these commissioners have said their initial take on it, but they haven't put forward a yea or nay on this definitively.
Correct.
So, but that's what it would take. It would be, I think, a short discussion, a short item if you've got those resolutions here. Do you guys agree? Dan?
I'm going to complicate things unfortunately, or maybe not. I'm, I'm not, I don't feel like the option of moving the house back to the 25-foot rear yard setback has.
Wait, we talked about five feet.
Well.
Because there's nowhere to park. If you, if you draw it out on a plan, you'll see there's 25 feet, then there's the house, and then you have to park right in the middle of the property between the ADU and.
There's a driveway and it goes to the garage.
You can't, you can't turn around.
It's not been demonstrated to my satisfaction, and so.
You all can sit down, we're, the public hearing's closed, so thank you though. We can move to extend in just a few minutes.
Yeah. Okay, so Dan, that was to your satisfaction, I get that. They didn't want to do that, they didn't want to move it to the 25-foot line, so.
Okay, well, that's going to affect my decision.
Okay, so that said, we would be able to sit at a meeting with two resolutions in front of us and make a statement, yea or nay at that meeting.
Yes, for me.
Okay.
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Andy? Okay, short topic, short subject meeting with a room full of people and we would get through this quickly, I would hope. Okay, so in the interest of making sure that we don't try to cram 10 minutes worth of stuff into two minutes, I'm going to say, do commissioners vote to extend to 10:30?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, so we can talk for more than three minutes. All right, so what this means in summary, and again, I got to say this, this oddest meeting that we've ever had, I think about this. So that you guys are going to write an agenda and you're going to talk about it this week and you're going to set a date for meetings, right? And staff is going to help you guys sit down and do that. I don't know whether you want to have staff present for that? Okay. All right, absolutely, I think that's a necessity. So as long as you both agree to that, staff would be present. And that there has to be Dana's agreement that the client, your client, is going to be present and willing to listen to the options besides what they have wanted in the past, right? Okay, yeah, all right. But it's time to get this over with and move forward, so. And this is all in the interest of creating something that's amenable to two parties. So I think that that's what we can do, offer at this point. And we've got the commission's willingness to get through this in short order in a meeting. So Martha.
One, one quick question for Ann. You know, addressing, addressing the, the requirements, it's in the record now, but if we have a very short discussion and vote next time, is that going to, can we refer back to this meeting and all the items we discussed?
Yes, it would still be part of the record.
Okay.
Okay, so what we're saying is that this is continued to a date certain and that date would be for the record.
October 28th at 7:00 PM.
All right, so Martha.
And I will reiterate, if there is a conclusion to the negotiation, we would need to know that by October 14th to be able to prepare for the hearing.
Right. Okay, so I think we've made it clear that something will get resolved by that next meeting where we can consider this. It'll go one way or the other at that meeting, whether you guys come to a resolution or not. All right. I don't know if that can go out.
Yeah, I would suggest working with Martha on that, so we'll, we'll make sure that we can get that.
All right. So that puts this item to bed, dare we say? All right, all right, thank you very much. All right, staff, thank you. You guys have borne the brunt of this, I know. Thank you very much for.
Thank you, Martha.
Up here, right.
Good luck.
Martha's the right person for the job.
Well, I'm just going to say that we, even though we have the extension of the meeting, I don't think any of us really want to consider anything else unless we have to consider something else on our agenda tonight.
Well, Peter, on the minutes of July 9th, I pointed out a mistake. So I think the staff knows that they need.
Okay, so we could, we could look at that. The minutes are a quick vote, if staff already has your information about the minutes for.
I can give them the page.
Get those out of the binder.
Any reports?
No. So I was out for July 8th and the previous one was the biggie about the driveway.
That was mine.
Okay, so you've got what you need. So we have two sets of meeting minutes. I don't know what those notes are, but you've got them. For that, that meeting. All right, does anybody else have any other commentary about those two meetings that are in the binder tonight? No. Dan's looking. Margaret, you've already looked.
I already looked.
Okay. Dan says no. So we can take a vote for the meeting minutes of May 27th. There would be four of us here for those meeting minutes. Chair Rizzo is no longer with us. So do we all say aye to those?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, then the following minutes for July 8th, I cannot vote on. So it's just the three of you.
So I say aye with the corrections that I submitted.
Aye.
There you have it. All right, thank you.
Now, should we keep all this stuff?
Are we forgetting? No, okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you.